Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting in December. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yeah.
Trustee Canata.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Knight.
Here.
Trustee May.
Here.
Trustee Wheeler is absent. Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee McGinnis.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Simler.
Here.
We have a call. Trustees, please note that there are items on your agenda that need to be adopted. There are no items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I move for the adoption of the agenda. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing opposed. The agenda is adopted. The minutes for the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting were circulated in advance. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, I move that we approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. In accordance with Tennessee law, if there had been requests from the public to address the board, it would occur at this point in the meeting. However, the board did not receive any requests, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. This time, I recognize President Lakari, who will introduce today's campus spotlight.
Thank you, Chairman Jenkins. Today, I have two colleagues in front of us. Dr. William, better known as Buzz, Hoon, is the Dean of the College of Arts and Letters. Before coming to Austin P. in twenty twenty-two, Dr. Hoon was a professor, chair, and associate dean at Western Illinois University, where he established their sports broadcasting program. He currently serves as host and producer for two podcasts featuring Austin P. alumni and faculty. So he's not given up his broadcasting roots and brought them here to Austin P. Dr. Tony Morris is in his twelfth year here at Austin P. He joined our university as Professor of Art History with specialty in modern and contemporary art of the United States. He has served as the Department Chair in Art and Design and the Associate Dean of Arts and Letters, and joins us today in his capacity as interim director of the Center for Excellence in the Creative Arts. Dr. Hoon and Dr. Morris.
Thank you, President Lakari, and thanks to the Board of Trustees for this opportunity to highlight our college. Since arriving at campus sixteen months ago, and I keep referring to my time like a mother refers to their toddler's age, I've been intent on shining a light on some of the things that we are doing well. In my interview for this position, I said I wanted the college to be connected with the community, and I believe that we are the base of the university. We are also a college full of storytellers. This department tells a story in a different way, and I feel it is my job to be the chief storyteller. Our mission is to provide a student experience that prepares our students for all types of careers and highlights student success so that they feel they are part of something special. And I will begin this journey by highlighting the Department of Art and Design. The department has approximately three hundred majors and concentrations that offer hands-on learning. Hopefully, for those that got to come to the building last night, you got to see some of the examples of their work and their ability. Students gain valuable experience by participating in weekly rotating student exhibits in the Barbara Beach Gallery from September. Graphic design students have received three Nashville Addy Awards for their design work and recognition for their entry in the annual national design competition. Studio art students have represented Austin P. in regional collegiate fine art exhibitions. Student teams in our animation program have participated in the nationwide twenty-four-hour animation competition since twenty sixteen, and four students have spent their summer at the Chautauqua Art Institute in a very competitive residency funded by CICA. In the Department of Communication, the department provides students with the tools to succeed with hands-on opportunities thanks to our state-of-the-art facilities. What you see in this slide here is a picture of a sports remote desk that we just got and we unveiled at a football tailgate where students got to do a live broadcast, and it was very successful. They enjoyed that opportunity. And at the department, it's about making sure that our students have the ability to effectively communicate in a variety of ways. One of the ways that we connect with the community is a event planning minor. It's very popular with our students and, again, provides unique community engagement. We have both internal and community partnerships that we're very proud of. We have a continuing partnership with Austin P. Athletics to stream all home football games on ESPN Plus and with the Clarksville-Mongomery County School System to record all high school graduations. In the Department of History and Philosophy, our students are excited about our public history focus. To let you know, public historians are, use their training to meet the needs of the community. Public history allows us to deepen and strengthen our connection with and knowledge of the past. Public history shows a path outside of the traditional route of just teacher. For example, Austin P. graduates are public servants, lawyers, and even politicians. Also very proud of our student clubs and organizations, which provide great opportunities for our students in the History Club, the Asian Studies Club, and Theta Delta is the local chapter of Phi Alpha Theta, the National History Honors Club, and they just had their initiation ceremonies yesterday. In the Department of Languages and Literature, our students and faculty collaborate to produce the Zone Three Literary Journal, which includes writing examples in the area, in the areas of fiction, nonfiction, and poetry. Creative writing students have successfully resurrected the Red Mudd Review. A student-organized literary magazine and foreign language faculty successfully hosted over three hundred high school students for the Modern Language Festival last year to make sure that we are keeping foreign languages alive within the region. And our department offers study abroad opportunities for students to England, Argentina, and Spain. This is from a recent study abroad opportunity in last summer. In the Department of Music, we have over one hundred performances each semester in the six-hundred-seat George and Sharon Mayberry Concert Hall. It's amazing, a hundred performances each semester. Almost all these concerts are free to the public. In fact, they enjoy having an audience and hope to see as many community members as possible at their concerts. If you can't make it, all concerts are livestream, which is a great opportunity for friends and family members of the musicians that cannot make it to campus. Also happy to tell you about our Fulbright Scholar, Bernadette Johns, who is the first one from the university since nineteen sixty-seven. And a couple other things I want to highlight about the Department of Music. The music therapy program is another way that our students connect with the community. On November fifth, they hosted the very first Clarksville Music Therapy Day. Very proud to bring in people within the community to learn more about that. And, of course, I couldn't be, go over the Department of Music and without saying something about the governor's own marching band. That person that really should be doing that. But towards they are great community emissaries, and, for instance, the last home football game, they had three hundred and fifty area high school students that came and participated in GOM Day. So very proud of all they do in the Department of Music. In the Department of Theater and Dance, we have five fully-produced productions throughout the academic year with an additional five performance opportunities. Students presented work at the Regional Conference of the American College Dance Association, and were passed on to the national level. Students worked professionally this summer in performance and technical internships, both locally and throughout the country. Students, even though they are in class and doing productions throughout the year, they're also applying their skills in commercial work, character performance for graveyard tours, cabaret performances, and stage prop supervision for off-campus organizations, all great ways to build up their portfolios. Couple other things I'd like to tell you about that we're trying to do within the college. We, as Dr. Lakari said, have started two podcasts, both called Govs on the Go, one for alumni and one for faculty. This is where listeners have the opportunity to gain insights to the accomplishments, experiences, and journeys of the remarkable College of Arts and Letters faculty and alumni. On the left there, you can see a picture of David Alfred that we did at the River Fest, and we did that podcast live on, to tape. I'm also happy to tell you about the Student Leadership Awards. This inaugural Leadership Award was designed to recognize outstanding undergraduate leaders in the college. Recipients were chosen based on their leadership skills and support of others inside and outside the classroom. Six students, one representing each department in the college, were presented with awards by faculty members. We have their names on the large plaque outside my office, and as I told them, they may live other places after graduation, but they will always be a part of them here at Austin P. We also have started to do an initiative called Coal Cares. It's an effort to teach students about the importance of both their mental and physical health and to help with retention. We collaborate with both internal and Clarksville community organizations to craft on-campus events that are both engaging and informational. For instance, we have done this year, make your own sleep kit, yoga in the arts squad, free journals and prompts, and coal is bananas about you to, again, stress the importance of healthy eating and drinking during the semester. Another new program is the Book a Professor Program. It's a way for us to connect with area high school community members. With this program, professors from the college can come directly into the classroom to share their expertise and forge meaningful connections with students. By going through our website, area teachers can call on our experts to discuss literature, art, history, or other fields, depending on their availability. Currently, we have thirteen professors from our college that are participating and volunteering their opportunity to come talk to area classrooms. Just a couple other efforts to make our connection with the community and help with recruitment. We had a great participation in River Fest in September. Our students and our faculty were onstage, were within that part of the community. If you happened to be walking through River Fest, you definitely saw the College of Arts and Letters throughout that presence in the weekend. And we are planning to have the College of Arts and Letters Night with the women's basketball team on January twenty-seventh, so you will see within the arena, if you attend that basketball game, again, students and faculty from our college supporting athletics. Now I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Morris, who will talk about CICA.
Thank you, Dean Hoon. APSU is the designated center of excellence for the creative arts, or CICA, as we call it. This is additional state funding that comes into the university in support for the arts areas of art and design, creative writing, music, and theater and dance. It is CICA's mission to make the arts more accessible regionally and locally. Much of that funding goes towards programming. Our invited artists have national reputations. There are some expensive schools in Nashville who bring their students up for our events. And, but CICA also funds some student scholarships, helps fund some faculty development. Within CICA, we also have the A-Cup Chair of Excellence. This is an endowed fund that allow, that rotates through the four areas of CICA annually. So last year, Art and Design had the A-Cup Chair of Excellence. We invited Rick Griffith from Design Matters in Denver, Colorado, to teach a specialty class for our students, where they reimagined the history of graphic design by making. They worked with our Goldsmith Press and Rare Type Collection, and the students made work that was about their individual identities. In addition to that, Rick had an exhibition, as you can see on the slide, and invited supplementary speakers to help with the class. CICA also oversees the Community School for the Arts, or CSA. CSA is dedicated to creating the next generation of artists locally and regionally, making those classes affordable. There's a commitment to a five-dollar rate per hour of instruction. We teach classes at, to all ages, from children through adults, and at various levels, from beginner through advanced. And I think, hopefully, last night, you saw the fruits of our labor in the fine arts areas. And I'll hand back to Dean Hoon.
Thank you. So since I've gotten here, I think our college has seen some, some success and some good news. We observed an increase of over nine percent in enrollment compared to the previous year, coupled with a five percent rise in retention. A new report shows that majoring in humanities and the arts in Tennessee is a wise investment as graduates are finding jobs and making more money than those with no degrees. Our success can be attributed to the hard work of our students, faculty, and staff. Our college has wonderful leadership thanks to the department chairpersons, who have, I think, the toughest job in the university. I'm thankful to my staff, to Dr. Morris, to Karazan, Communications Director, and our admin, with Row. Now, I've charged our college with a challenging yet essential premise for our college, especially given the high standards upheld by my fellow deans. I want the College of Arts and Letters to be the best college at the best university, and we aim to reach that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job. Excellent. No idea how many places you touched, and Trustee Atkins and I would also like to congratulate both of you all on your trend-setting hairdos.
We got this done just for you.
I don't have a question, but I do have a quick comment. I think, I've said this to Dr. Lakari before and others, that the campus spotlight, for me as a board member, is always one of the highlights of the board meeting. Our session last night, as an example, where we get to tour and learn more about, you know, the various colleges that are on campus and what you're doing, and otherwise, I would never have been in that building if I hadn't been invited by you yesterday. It was impressive and very enlightening, and the tour was outstanding, and the students that performed for us were just amazing. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A comment, too. I've heard wonderful things about how, since you've come to the university, Dr. Hoon, that you've been really engaged in the Clarksville community. Clarksville arts enthusiasts, leaders in the community have shared with me personally, you by name, how you have been really engaged, which I think is a great thing in our community and the partnership. And I liked, I also enjoyed hearing, one thing that you mentioned about music therapy, because I was part of a group years ago in Nashville that helped fund music therapy at Vanderbilt Children's Hospital, and little did I know how much music therapy helps. And that program has continued to grow, so I think that's great with the music therapy. And I know there's a great partnership here with the hospitals in the Clarksville, as well as in the Montgomery County area. But I'm sure that there's, great that y'all are doing that, too, because, you know, we don't think about these things and how things that, you know, hearing and just different things, how people are affected when they don't have it or they need some additional help to help them with that. So I think it's great.
Is there a requirement now that, that all students matriculate through some part of that? I know when I was here many years ago, by the way, just for the record, I graduated nineteen sixty-seven. I was not the Fulbright Scholar winner in nineteen seventy. Clear that up. But is that, because we had to take art music appreciation. That was, that was a two, two separate quarters. Is that required now? I think it should be.
Part of our gen ed offering, yes, that our students, that all the students are exposed as much as possible to, to, you know, take a variety of different classes and classes that they, they never would have anticipated enjoying as much as, until they take it.
I would also like to express some appreciation for those of us who call the College of Arts and Letters our second home. I, I'm an alum and student of the College of Business, but I participate in the marching band. Several students across campus who are not Arts and Letters majors do or are, participate in these performances, whether it's with the marching band or art, or art classes or musical theater, so forth. So as someone who calls Arts and Letters their second home, I appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you, Trustee Knight. Anyone else? Thank you for an incredible presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into action items for the Academic Affairs Committee Report. I recognize Trustee May.
Thank you, Trustee Jenkins. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from the mornings, this morning's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee approved minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the following action item, which is on the agenda for your approval today. Termination of the Academic Advisor Certificate. Provost Cronly presented information items regarding fall census enrollment, SEC COC decennial reaffirmation, and a letter notification to THEC for a new MS Environmental Science program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee May, do you have a motion for the board?
Yes, you have before you a proposal to terminate the Academic Advisor Certificate program. By direction of the committee, I move to approve this program termination.
Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We spoke. Before spoken, okay. Okay. All in favor, aye. All opposed. Okay. Students Affairs Committee Report, I recognize Trustee McGinnis, Chair of the Student Affairs Committee, to give us report of the committee meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Jenkins. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Student Affairs Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three committee meeting. There were no other action or information items on the agenda. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, now we move into the Business and Finance Committee Report. Recognize Trustee Canata, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us report of the committee meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Business and Finance Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three committee meeting. The committee considered and approved one action item, needing consideration of the board, which was the consideration of the October revised budget for first year twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee. Okay. Next, we work into the Executive Committee Report. Oh, excuse me. Trustee Canata's report included one item reporting action to the board.
We have before you a copy of the revised October budget. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the October revised budget.
Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee McGinnis.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Simler.
Yes.
Okay, the ayes have it. Next, we move into the Executive Committee Report. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Executive Committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Executive Committee meeting, and there were no action or information items. Now we move to the Audit Committee Report. I recognize Trustee Rowe from the Audit Committee to give us report of the committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from today's Audit Committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Audit Committee meeting and Audit Committee Executive Session. The committee heard presentations on the following information items. Information Technology Security Update, number two, internal audit reports issued between August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to November ninth, twenty twenty-three, with a list of outstanding audit recommendations. Number three, results of quality assurance review with external validation. That concludes my report for the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Rowe. Next, we will run into the President's Report and Report on Interim Items. I recognize President Lakari to give his report and to also report on any interim items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we've certainly had a great fall semester, and there's been a lot going on, on campus since our last meeting in September. We certainly had a great football season, and the trophy is here to prove it. You know, we, throughout the fall, the team actually set a number of milestones while winning this conference championship. It's the first team to win back-to-back championships in Austin P. history. At nine and three, we posted our best win percentage since an eight-and-two season all the way back in nineteen forty-nine.
Wow.
We had great crowds and a great game day atmosphere. In fact, we set the season attendance record for football this fall. And even when on the road, our away games generated a tremendous amount of interest. Our game against UT in Knoxville was the third-most-watched football game, college football game, in ESPN Plus history. And so, congratulations to our football team. Thank you all for supporting Clarksville's hometown team. We do have championship t-shirts for each trustee. They're waiting for you out in the, out in the lobby after, after the meeting. Last meeting, I spoke briefly about a few things that would be priorities for us for the year. Campus vitality, community engagement, enrollment and retention, laying the groundwork for the next comprehensive campaign of the university, and leveraging athletics for all of this. And so, I'll just give you a little bit of an update as to progress in each of these areas. Do a large part to, you still hear Leonard's energetic leadership engagement levels among students is higher than it's been in a long time. Fraternity and sorority recruitment was successful this fall. Participation in events, activities, and student organizations is at a high level. We want students to be emotionally attached to the university. We want this, we want them to feel personally connected to, to Austin P., and so, participation in these activities and events and organizations is really, really important. We organized a student road trip to the Eastern Kentucky game. We had an entire busload of students alongside the marching band, the entire cheer team, the entire dance team, and the mascot. And while we were there, during halftime, walking around the stadium, I heard a number of ECU fans, just overheard them, amazed at how many folks we had on the wayside of the, of the stadium, and it made a big difference in talking with some of the players afterwards. They could hear us, they could feel us, and it was, it was, it was great. So we have more to come, but campus engagement is, is moving in the right direction. We dramatically increased our connections and engagement with the community as well. Under Donnell's leadership, we've established the Leadership Exchange, which is an opportunity to bring in leaders in, we've done the, done the Army, we've done the arts, we're going to do business and education around the community to spend a day with Austin P., get to know us, get to... get to know us, get to know the kinds of opportunities we have to build connections and partnerships with, with them. And that is going very, very well. We have corporate connections that are deep and wide. In fact, Dean Karen Meisch just recently got back from a trip to Korea with our Industrial Development Board members, as LG Chem is working towards opening a multi-billion-dollar plant here. And so Karen is working alongside LG executives in order to ensure that we have students who are graduating with the right expertise to go and be part of their workforce. We have, at our first People in the Community Day of Service this, this fall as well, where a thousand Austin P. members went out and did, did service work in our local community so that we're making sure that we're giving back to, to Clarksville, Montgomery County, because they are so supportive of us. Enrollment continues to look good. You heard a very encouraging enrollment report for this fall from Dr. Cronly earlier this morning. We have an opportunity to build on that large freshman class that we welcomed this fall. Our admitted students for fall of twenty-four are running about twenty percent ahead of where we were at this point last year. So we have a great opportunity to build on this large freshman class that we had this fall. We're running about three percentage points better than we were at this point last year in terms of our freshman class this fall, registering for classes in the spring. So we're doing a better job of hanging on to our students once they're here. Regarding the next comprehensive campaign, Chris Phillips's staff has expanded to include development officers in a number of additional areas. And Dr. Cronly hosted a day-long training workshop for college deans on fundraising. So we're staffing up, and we're getting better. And all, in, in all of these areas, athletics has really played a, a, a great role, and they're being a great partner. We continue to work on getting students to games, even the away games, as you heard. Tailgating atmosphere has picked up. We're using the game day environment to launch campus tours for admissions, to give preview days a boost. And so when students are on campus, and high school students and their families are on campus, we align those days with football or basketball games so that they have an exciting environment to conclude the, the visit. Athletics and alumni are collaborating on GOVs gatherings around the state and really around the, around the country, where alums can meet our coaches and other campus leaders. Our student athletes are volunteering in the community, and they also, our student athletes are helping us recruit the next wave of GOVs. And so we're, we're really hitting all of those priorities very, very well in a very short period of time, so I'm proud of what the, what the team is, is doing. You might also have heard or saw the, the rollout of a statewide marketing campaign to boost the college-going rate in the state of Tennessee. As you know, the, the college-going rate, the percentage of high school graduates who go straight on to college, have been dropping pretty steadily since about twenty fifteen. And the public universities across the state have banded together, usually compete with each other a little bit, but on this one, we joined forces to put together a marketing campaign that identifies and helps communicate all of the positive returns on investment that a college degree provides you. And so this is, this is something that came out of sort of our quarterly breakfast that we have between myself and Randy Boyd, Phil Oldham at Tech, and especially, and Brian Nolan over at ETSU. So those, those connections that, that we're building here have, have some fruits already. And the marketing campaign will run, we'll keep it going, but we'll also do some analytics on it to make sure that, that we're getting, that we're getting eyeballs and that we're getting results. Finally, your packet includes list contracts and agreements that have been executed since the last meeting and State Building Commission actions that have also occurred. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, President Lakari. Are there any comments or questions for President Lakari?
Lots of good news.
Amen. Fighting time to be at Austin P.
Absolutely.
Great day to be a GOV. Well, I can, I, I will thank you all for the name tags. I know all the trustees are wearing your name tags, and I see a lot in the audience that are wearing name tags. And this one encourage you, I, I go back to work as soon as I leave here, but this is the name tag I have to substitute when I get back to work. But in looking for that, I found my dad's name tag. My dad died in two thousand and two, and I, I kept that as a reminder, but I, I just like to encourage that, you know, you have professors maybe wandering through the hall, a student that has never had a class with them, never will have a class with them, will know who they are. And, you know, this is, it's a, it's an easy way to start a conversation, and, you know, a lot of people have a hard time remembering names, and, you know, your, your key people at the university, your professors and your administrators and whatnot, need to be easily identified by the students. I think like a, a big difference. I know I, I graduated from Rhodes College in Memphis, and nobody ever wore any tags. And, you know, a lot of people, we, we didn't even know who they were, even if they were professor, they, somebody late in life going to college. So I would just encourage you to wear these name tags, and thank you for the extra effort, Carol, on getting all these name tags together. We don't have any further questions. It's for President Lakari that I'm going to move that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. The next meeting that we have, regularly scheduled meeting, is March twenty-second. So we will look forward to seeing everybody in March. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.